Okay, welcome everyone to the October Hadley School Committee meeting. May I have a motion to open this meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay terrific, thank you. We are all here except Paul Pfeiffer and so let's move on to the adjustments to the agenda.
So our adjustments to the agenda this evening, if you're looking at the agenda online, the adjustments to the agenda are highlighted. I included in our discussion of COVID-19 mitigation strategies for 2122, a discussion of the Hadley Board of Health just extended its mask advisory and our vaccine rates in Hadley Public Schools. Policy Subcommittee, we will discuss a first reading of a flag policy and other business that was discussed at Policy Subcommittee. And we will need to appoint school committee representatives for Unit A negotiations and Unit D negotiations as the Chair has received a request from the President of the HEA to enter into negotiations for the next contracts.
Terrific, thank you. And those are highlighted in the agenda doc if anyone wants to find those adjustments. Okay, we're moving into public comment and as a reminder, these are limited to three minutes and generally pertain to the topics on the agenda and do not necessarily receive a comments back or discussion from the school committee. And so we'll go ahead and open it up. If if anyone has any comments from the public, please go ahead and raise your digital hand and we will take you off mute to hear you. Okay, I think I think we are without comment this evening. Terrific, moving to presentations and discussion items. Item number one Superintendent Awards, Annie?
Yes, and so I would ask that if Kyle and his family aren't able to make it tonight, another adjustment may be that we ask them that they want to come in November to present the award. But I believe, I just want to confirm that Eve is here and I believe I've made the family co-host, let's make sure I did that. So I'm going to confirm that they're here and then yay, good. Great, you don't have to be on camera, I just wanted to make sure you were here so you can hear all the wonderful things we have to say about you. And so Eve is being presented with the NASDAQ Award for Student Leadership and for Academic Excellence and that's New England School Development Council. Academically, Eve ranks second in her extremely competitive class with a 4.48 weighted GPA and I can tell you that is right behind 4.51. So this is extremely competitive and neck and neck. Eve has taken many challenging courses such as AP United States History, AP Language and Composition, College Level Precalculus, College Level Calculus, and several courses at our local community college, at Greenfield Community College. And she's enrolled in our early college high school program and is always seeking to challenge herself and expand her knowledge. You have made many lasting impacts to our school and to the community at large. Eve is the co-president of the Student Council. She was selected by her peers, elected by her peers to represent the student body. She swims competitively, is captain of the cross-country team, a member of the Jazz and Pep Band. She has earned her Bronze and Silver Award in scouting and is working toward her Gold Award right now. That's just huge, so much work. She are incredibly dedicated to making our entire community and just the world at large a better place. You are described by the adults at Hopkins as one of the first people to volunteer when a friend or peer needs help. And as the guidance counselor said, Ms. Here said, "I can always," that's a big word, "not most of the time, but always count on Eve to be a positive influence on her peers." And I would like to say that when I looked at it, there's so many wonderful things to say about you, Eve. But this this little odd thing, I guess would be odd for me, just just grab me by the heart. So students often put together resumes to help adults write them letters of recommendation. And the organization of Eve's resume, no one would expect a young person, their professional experience would not be incredibly long. And usually what's typical is right after that, students have their list of awards. That's that's the order of things, awards, skills, and the very last thing, and extracurriculars, and then usually the last thing is volunteerism. And for Eve, professional experience and immediately volunteer work, which you've done, you've done a great deal. But yes, isn't that just, it just says so much about who you are, Eve. So I am honored to present you with this award, which will be given to you tomorrow at Hopkins. So obviously I can't hand it through the computer. And it's a certificate, but so much more than a certificate. It really is a way for all of us, the school committee, myself, the leadership in Hadley, the adults and your peers and the community at large to say thank you, Eve, just for being you. Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations, Eve.
Thank you, Eve, it's been a pleasure working alongside you, seeing you in the school community and congratulations to you and your family.
Thank you guys so much.
Congratulations to parents.
We've enjoyed her a lot too.
Terrific, thank you so much, Annie, for recognizing students who are excelling. It really is a wonderful thing to see that and we look forward to hearing from about Kyle's accomplishments, hopefully next month. Thank you for that again. All right.
I am going to remove your co-host privileges. If you're dying to co-host, you can always let us know.
All right, terrific, thank you. Okay, so item B on the agenda, COVID-19 mitigation strategies for 2122, Annie?
Sure, so just an update because it's hard to keep up and it's it gets pretty confusing. So on September 27, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education promulgated a mask requirement. So that was on September 27. They said that it would be in effect to at least November 1st. I would like you to know that there is some discussion right now about whether or not, just in general, I hear school committees talking about wondering, will the department extend that? We don't know that yet, but we do know that this is in effect until November 1st. And that requirement said that as of October 15, if a school demonstrates a vaccination rate of 80% or more for all students and staff in the school through an attestation form submitted to the department, then vaccinated individuals in that school would no longer be subject to the mask requirement. However, in our community, so although really good news here, really, really good news. I'm going to open it up over here for me, people have access to it through the agenda and they see the weekly dashboard every week in the Superintendent Weekly Newsletter. So great news. We have remarkably high vaccination rates among faculty and staff and the students even are at 77.73, so let's say 78%. I just updated it today, 78% of just students, not counting faculty at Hopkins, 78% are fully vaccinated. And that brings our total staff and students at Hopkins Academy to essentially 81%, which means we could apply for attestation. The reason, or we could submit, excuse me, we could submit an attestation form, which would mean that we no longer, vaccinated individuals would not be required to wear masks at Hopkins Academy. However, the school committee has always taken into consideration, which I would argue is very good practice because we are one department within a town, the recommendations of the Hadley Board of Health. The Hadley Board of Health had a mask requirement that they passed in September. And on October 24, 2021, and you see that in adjustments to the agenda, if anyone in the public wanted to see the extension of this, the Board of Health has extended that advisory beginning on October 24 for at least 30 more days, which will bring us essentially to November 22. I am assuming that we would not submit an attestation form until the Hadley Board of Health had had altered or rescinded its mask requirements. So I just want to explain to the public and the school committee that while I'm absolutely thrilled about where we are with vaccination rates, that right now, the Hadley Board of Health has its own mask requirement. And Hadley Board of Health, if the community is saying, "Well, gosh, why is that? I don't get that." What can I show? Oh, on the dashboard, when people are on the weekly dashboard, on the very first tab, that there's a, there's like a key for CDC Community Transmission Thresholds. And all the data that we keep in the dashboard or that I supply in the dashboard about Hampshire County and about Hadley, the CDC thresholds apply to counties. So I imagine that the Hadley Board of Health is looking at those CDC thresholds. And even though things are definitely trending in the right direction, we had a peak in Hampshire County of an average previous seven-day case count of 341 back on September 16 and now as of 1022, that had dropped to 72. It's definitely trending in the right direction. It is still considered substantial. 49 or less is considered moderate and CDC recommends that in communities with substantial or high transmission, that even vaccinated people wear masks in public spaces. So I just also, I don't want people thinking that our local Board of Health is just kind of randomly doing things. And I say this because sometimes it's confusing, right, to keep track of all this. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education put out a mask requirement that is set to potentially expire on November 1st. Instead, as of October 15, if you had 80% or greater in a school building of all staff and students who are vaccinated, which Hopkins has met that threshold, you could submit an attestation form allowing vaccinated individuals to remove their masks. However, we also have a Board of Health that is monitoring CDC thresholds and community transmission rates and community data and at this point in time has extended its mask requirement. So at this point in time, we are one, just in a mask requirement and I'm not submitting the request at this point in time. I don't want people to hear that that would never happen, but at this point in time for the reasons I just stated. And that was just meant to be an update for folks.
Thank you, Annie. I'm not sure that this really requires a discussion, but I I've been doing a fair amount of sort of getting outside of the home now and in Massachusetts as well as in other states. And just the general sentiment seems to be, it is just not prudent to remove the mask indoors. That's what I'm hearing and I'm hearing a lot more about boosters these days and potency of vaccination status and how that varies depending on what kind of vaccination that you received. And I've also read a fair amount that says that, you know, in a pandemic like this, the ebb and flow could vary greatly. And what we, even though 72 seems really low, gosh, all it takes is about 72 for it to spiral back up again if we're not very cautious. And so it doesn't, it doesn't seem to me to be too much to ask to extend it just until right about Thanksgiving. That's that's my personal feeling on it.
Yeah, and I'll just weigh in, I'm supportive of the Board of Health's direction. I appreciate their leadership in this. And I think just, you know, following their guidance in terms of our our buildings or town buildings and we have employees inside that I think are, you know, we want, we've always had the health and safety of them and the children at the foremost. So I appreciate their leadership on this and I think it makes a lot of sense to follow their guidance as a town.
Great.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And I will, just with that, a final yay, I out, I highlighted the rates of vaccination in our district, which are fantastic. And I will also say, in Hampshire County, the vaccination rate for 12 to 17-year-olds as of October 22, fully vaccinated, not one dose, two weeks after, if it's a two-dose regimen, 71.5%. That is just fantastic, 12 to 17-year-olds in Hampshire County. So, um, thank you, thank you to everybody who's doing whatever bit they can to to help us all.
Annie, a quick question, and I, that's great, those numbers are wonderful. And I know you've advertised the number of vaccination opportunities and clinics that we've been able to offer right on site. Humira mentioned booster shots and with, I believe, Moderna being approved. And I think we're at the stage of understanding, you know, some options for everybody. Is that something that you've explored in terms of offering a booster opportunity for staff on site?
So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education hasn't recommended doing that at this point. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't. I think that the thinking is that they are so readily available and easy to get at this point at pharmacies everywhere. It may be that when the authorization comes through, which may have happened today and I just haven't seen the news, for younger children, then that may be something, although I would imagine many parents may go to their PD, I don't know, but that could be something that that it makes sense because there could be like high demand all at once. There could be high demand all at once, that the booster is not that we wouldn't, it just hasn't been discussed. And I think it hasn't been discussed because they are so widely available and relatively easy to schedule and appoint at any pharmacy, or yeah, any even storefront pharmacy as well as doctor's offices.
It's a really good question, Heather. And I know that educators sometimes have a hard time getting away during the school day and and gaining access to some of those appointments. So if it were to become available, that's a, that that might help ease and help some of our more at-risk educators gain access. So worth asking the question of our leaders at DESI to see if those vaccine mobiles could come back and also provide boosters in addition to those shots, whether they could do for a twofer. That'd be great.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is update on School Committee Strategic Planning Session, Annie?
Yes, so just want to start talking to the public about some of the ideas that we talked about exploring and in some cases, these may be things that you see referenced in school strategy improvement plans, which are subject to school committee approval. Just want to start talking to folks about some of the ideas that were creative ideas that, and it was about brainstorming and what are some possibilities? So in no way do I want to imply that this is, this is our seven-point plan that's starting tomorrow. This is really was answering the question, what are some unexplored possibilities that may increase enrollment? The entire region is seeing declines in enrollment predominantly as a result of lower birth rates. And so what are some of the ways that we might encourage additional enrollment? So one thing that we talked about was what might it look like? And what are the, what are the benefits? And what might it look like to recruit international students through something called an F1 visa program? It's a very specific visa program. Under the F1 visa program, the international student, their family is responsible for paying for the costs associated with providing an education to the student. And that's essentially a tuition charge. And that's not something that it would be, we're deciding that, that's that's laid out in the F1 visa process. Another idea we talked about was looking at how we can expand early college high school to include Chapter 74 trade. So students who are interested in things like carpentry and culinary and electrical, this is no way to say that we don't think the world of our regional vocational schools, but for those students who say, "I wish there was a way that I could pursue this and stay at Hopkins Academy." So that was one idea to possibly explore and make that an option. Another idea that we talked about was looking to, and we've talked about this for a while, a Chapter 74 program in public safety. Currently, the only recognized Chapter 74 program is in criminal justice and we know that our students have indicated their interest in more of broader options within protective services occupation, including firefighters. And so right now, we were talking about and we started preliminary discussions and planning with Hadley Public Safety and Greenfield Community College to say, what kind of program might we create that would give students the options of exploring a variety of protective services careers and potentially earn, enroll in credit-bearing college courses at Greenfield Community College in some of these fields? So the best elements of early college high school, best elements of innovation pathways, how can we create additional internship opportunities for our students over at the public safety complex, which they seem to really enjoy, as well as provide high-quality career and technical training? So we're looking at that as well. Developing language programs at the elementary school. And as you are aware, we're already experimenting with that with a Spanish lab and the students seem to absolutely love it. Every time I walk through the cafeteria over there, every student is greeting everyone in Spanish. Or certainly Mr. Roman Perez, one of our staff members, a fluent Spanish speaker, his first language is Spanish and bilingual staff member and the students are just eating it up. They're absolutely enjoying it. We talked about ways that we might think of making senior year, provide greater opportunities for personalization and individualization, the recognition that every single student doesn't need or desire the same experience. And so what does that mean and what might it look like? And we've talked about this for a while, this is a long-term goal, is to truly figure out how we can make what's called a wall-to-wall option of early college high school, which is where a student who wanted to, not required of all students, but a student who wanted to would have the option of graduating with both a diploma and potentially an associate's degree. We also talked about the use of SRFunds and we reviewed data from the input from families and families and faculty and facilities improvements and safety, yeah, school safety via facilities improvements or related to facilities improvements was definitely a top priority. And with that, we also talked a bit about the Mass School Building Authority process and how we might create stronger statements of interest. We have submitted a statement of interest twice now and we haven't been invited into the process as a major renovation. So one of the recommendations we were given actually by the Mass School Building Authority is to consider perhaps having a facilities checkup, like somebody looking at Hopkins, top to bottom, and making recommendations and evaluating the condition of all elements of the facilities that would help drive improvements to our HVAC system and would also be something that we could submit with our statement of interest. So that is something we will look to do this year in preparation for submitting another statement of interest. And that was really the first brainstorming session. In our second session, we talked a great deal about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging and what that means, what it means to be an anti-racist district, how we build off of the resolution the school committee passed in August 2020, 2020, right? Or was it this past August, 2021? The the school committee resolution with that, they, that was passed. So how do we build on that? And how do we link the work that we're doing around social and emotional learning and positive behavioral intervention supports, responsive classroom and distorted justice? How do we integrate this work in a meaningful way? So people don't feel as though it's just, we just are chasing different disparate initiatives. And spent a great deal of discussion on that. And the big takeaway there, which I had higher hopes for myself that I would have a a sample now for you, although thankfully the school committee is wise and knows me better than I know myself, apparently, because you would ask that by June that we have a possible dashboard so that we could be clear about what's our vision, what's our current reality, what are our strategies for closing the gap? And how do we evaluate our progress? How do we stay on top of this? And regularly see this at school committee meetings and make sure that we're looking at it regularly? I had said, "Oh, I'll have that to you by next month." Well, like I said, you guys know me better than I know myself, but I'm still going to beat June. That I'm going on the record, but it's it's gonna be next month. So and the kinds of things we would look at in an equity dashboard and if the public is interested in what we mean by this, we're not talking about, when you talk about a dashboard, that's not saying we're going to do this specific, it's 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 not talking about curriculum specifically, like a specific curriculum we're using. It's it's actually just looking at quantitative and qualitative data that tells us, you know, do we, do we see disproportionality anywhere? Like when we look at our discipline data, when we look at our graduation data, when we look at access to higher-level courses or even who's participating in extracurricular activities like athletics, who's going on field trips? So who's participating in what? Kind of that's the quantitative data. And then we also ask, and I wonder why that's happening? And then we dig in and try to, and ask people for their individual experiences that help us to understand, here's the what we see and here's why some of these things might be happening. So we are evaluating data, gathering additional data, and that's what you see in a dashboard. And then you regularly look at that and try to see, well, where are we making progress? And where are we still seem, where do we still seem to struggle? And that's, any, any school committee member can also, please feel free to add in.
Thank you, Annie, I think you really captured well two somewhat full, long afternoons of the vibrant discussion with the school committee and the administrators. And I think one thing I want to highlight is I really appreciated our discussion about like imagining these possibilities, but not necessarily committing to any one of them just yet, but rather prototyping in a not very expensive and not very difficult kind of way, what that could look like in order to see if there's an appetite for it amongst the school community and also with parents who might consider choicing in. So I really appreciate that and I think the fact that we've gotten such great resonance with the Spanish lab is an example of that, right? It's easy for us to have a small Spanish lab and see, do students like this? Do we get parent support? Does this seem right? That's a great way to test whether, you know, having languages early might make sense to do. So excited about that. And looking forward to the additional ways. I've heard a lot of parents talk about providing students the opportunity to be trained vocationally and also maintain their Hopkins connection, right? We have families that go back 200, 300 years as Hopkins alum to be able to graduate as a Hopkins alum and have their plumbing diploma or their carpentry diploma or their electrical, such a valuable thing. And the trades are increasing in this more robotics economy. So I, and also the the housing boom. So I just think for a lot of reasons, these ideas make sense and worth trying on a small scale before committing all out. So thank you for capturing that.
Happy to, and I believe Kyle has joined us. So I think if it's okay, unless, I'm sorry, should the school committee?
Maybe we could just close on this discussion and then turn our attention, no worries, no worries. Colleagues, any other aspects to the strategic planning session to to highlight?
I think, Annie, you've captured it very well and Humira, I appreciate your reinforcement of of the the meetings, you know, they were wonderful. I I also truly appreciated everybody's openness and including the administration and staff. It was, I thought, a really It was, I thought, a really helpful and just collegial educational discussion. So I, I really appreciated it. Thanks.
I just want to add one thing real quick, just to tack on. I, I agree with everything the three of you had said thus far. And I just appreciate how respectful our school committee is of one another and open to ideas and open to letting us sit there for hours on end and hash it out and having it be a really civil, respectful, and open environment that we can kind of say it, and sometimes maybe it doesn't come out right, but somebody builds off of that and builds off of that. And in the end, it, it turns into, you know, Annie's summary of, hey, we made some serious, some serious progress, and I appreciate that. And the only other thing I wrote down is that it's exciting to have your child come home and say a sentence in Spanish. I think that's fabulous. And I have heard a lot of positive, positive parent feedback just out and about, like parents really excited that their kid is learning Spanish at, at school. So just, just small little thing, but it's, it's made a big impact so far. So it's exciting.
Ethan, we haven't heard from you.
I'm just sitting back here listening. No, I, I thought that, that the conversations were good. I, I would echo everything that's been said. I, I will also just add that as someone who came on board when, right around the time the pandemic started, it's been, it was really nice to start thinking a little bit more long-term. You know, most of the conversations we've had in the last year have been kind of in the moment and, and what are we going to do this month? What are we going to do next month? It was really, it was really great to think about and imagine what Hadley Public Schools looks like five, ten, twenty years down the road. And that was, that was, that was really good.
And Spanish is great, too.
Agreed, agreed. Excellent. Thank you, Annie, for that, that recap. And yes, let's go back to the awards.
Yes, so Kyle, I know that you and your family are here. Humira, I am going to make you the host, because my computer just made a very strange noise, which means it could just decide it's something odd. And that way, the whole meeting will not go away. You will be the host now. And then you can make Kyle the co-host.
Terrific. All right, you're welcome. All right, Kyle and the Ucknute family, I have just made you co-host, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself, so we may present you with this award.
Perfect. And you have the ability, if you would like, to turn your video on. That's up to you, but normally participants can't, so just so you know, you can. So academically, Kyle is being awarded the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Certificate of Excellence. Academically, Kyle ranks first in his extremely competitive class. He possesses a four-point-five-one weighted GPA. He's taken some of the most difficult courses offered at Hopkins Academy, including Advanced Placement U.S. History, AP World History, AP Language and Composition, Honors Chemistry. And Kyle has received the Seal of Bilinguality in Spanish. He decided to challenge himself during his senior year with his most rigorous course load yet, including AP Calculus, AP Spanish, AP Chemistry, and Honors Biomedical Science, in addition to two college-level courses. He's a member of the Early College High School Program and will have completed four college courses by the time he graduates from Hopkins Academy. He's been awarded several top awards, including the Xerox Award for Innovation in Information Technology, the UVM Citizen Scholar Award, the Academic Excellence Award in AP Language, the Isabella de Este Award for Enthusiasm in History, and nomination to attend the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference. He remains incredibly humble despite the countless awards and recognitions he has received. He is a natural-born leader and an individual we can count on to always look out for his peers and to be a positive role model. He has served on the Student Council since 2016. He is a peer mentor, a member of the National Honor Society. And on top of, of all of that, he volunteers at local organizations, and he works. Kyle cares deeply about everyone in our school commu- community, and he advocates for others. And Kyle, you do have a long and impressive list of honors and awards. And as was stated, people recognize the fact that you maintain, you remain humble despite all of these accomplishments. And what really impresses me is someone with all of your accomplishments at such a young age and all of these awards, it's easy to get accustomed to the world just looking at you because you've done so much, even as a young man. But I look at some of your volunteer work, your volunteer work at the Ronald McDonald House in Springfield, where you serve on a team board, you're a team board member, to ensure that families have a comfortable place when their children are in area hospitals and that they can stay there for free. That you supported a Special Olympics event and played in the Hopkins Academy pep band at the Special Olympics Basketball Games and provided encouragement for those athletes and entertainment for the spectators. And also that you participated in Ride to Remember. So you supported more than three hundred and fifty cyclists in a hundred-mile biking charity event. And you staffed five rest stops by distributing food and water bottles to those riders and picking up trash. So for someone who, for good reason, is probably accustomed to having people talk about you and look at you and all the wonderful things that you do, I'm impressed with the fact that you clearly see how important it is to see others, that to be seen is nice, but to have the moral and emotional wisdom to see others, that's what matters the most. And clearly, by the things that you do in your volunteer time, you see that and you live that. And so congratulations and thank you for contributing so much to our school.
Yeah, thank you for this. I really appreciate it. I'm, I'm, thank you for having me today, too. Sorry, I'm late. I had a soccer game. But yeah, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Kyle, and also to the Ucknute family. Annie, that was a beautiful tribute to an amazing young man. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Terrific. Okay. We are going to continue moving down this agenda. And next up is the per diem rates for substitute nurses. Annie? And you are unmute. And I need to, I need to make you co-host. Hang on one second.
We, we got the charades on that one.
Here we go. You're all set now.
Okay, sorry, when I made you the host, I became a participant. So there you go. I didn't realize that. Great. And Kyle, your certificate will be in the Hopkins Academy office tomorrow morning. Okay, so per diem rates for substitute nurses. We are, like many districts, really struggling to find substitute nurses at the moment. The average rate currently, we pay a hundred and fifty dollars per day for a substitute school nurse. The average rate right now in Hampshire County is one sixty-five. However, I am recommending the school committee support and approve a rate of one seventy-five per day, because I also know that many of those school committees are, or school districts are in active discussion about raising their rate to one seventy-five. So rather than just keep coming back, I'm recommending that we have a per diem rate for substitute nurses of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per day.
Do I hear a motion?
Just a question. I'm sorry. I'm assuming financially, Chris, and I mean, we've modeled this and the impact to the district, and we're, we're good, we're able to support that?
Say, overall, the district is in, is in good financial shape, shape at the moment. And this also would be a cost that could potentially be something that we could use SRFunding for if we needed to, although that's not our current reality.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I would motion to approve to increase the substitute nursing per diem rate to one seventy-five.
Great, thank you, Chair. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, so approval of Harts Brook.
Annually, the school committee is required, and Paul isn't even here. I finally have the law for him, because I know that he always asks, why do we do this? Actually, oddly, under the compulsory attendance law. So under MGL seventy-six, section one, the local school committee is required to approve all private schools operating within its geographic boundaries, like K through twelve schools, not every daycare that operates here, and, or early childhood center, excuse me. And so annually, you approve Harts Brook's operation and operating plan. And I let you know that I have reviewed all of the required documentation, which is delineated in the school committee policy LBCAE dash two. And I have reviewed it, and I'm recommending to the school committee that, once again, we approve the operation of Harts Brook School.
Great, thank you, Annie. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Harts Brook School for the twenty twenty-one to twenty-two year?
Terrific. Do I hear? Wait a second. Okay, terrific. And call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And so next, we have possible winter concert at Hopkins Academy and the decision-making steps around that. Annie?
Just, just so folks know, so we are planning, putting together, Ms. Fazio, Fazio is putting together a plan for an in-person concert, which we will also, just as we did with graduation, put together a plan, have the Board of Health review it and give us the thumbs up. But we will not commit to that, finally, we're planning for it, until about one week before. And gosh, I wish I had the date right in front of me. But essentially, think about two weeks after Thanksgiving. We'll be looking at the data, we will talk to the Board of Health. And if they give us the green light, we'd have an in-person concert with everything they've approved. And if for some reason, things were not going in the direction that we had hoped, we would have a virtual concert as we have in the past. But I just want the families to understand, there's a reason why we're waiting to commit. Really, just, we would always want to be as, looking at the most recent data as, as practically possible, and particularly given the fact that Thanksgiving is a high-contact and bustling holiday. We want to take that into consideration as well.
That makes a lot of sense, Annie. If there is a concert, is there already a date in mind? Did you already mention that?
You know what? I'm going to look it up for you. I feel like it is, I should have known that, and I don't. I feel like it is the week of December thirteenth. I feel like it is that, and, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
That's helpful.
Yeah, very good. So about one week in advance of that.
So no decision or vote is needed for this?
Yes, just letting folks know.
Terrific. The last item on the presentations part of the agenda, contingency planning, transportation, and food services.
Yes, so just folks hear this story nationally. This is a very tight labor market. School districts across the country and in Massachusetts are struggling to keep their transportation services and food services fully staffed. That has been a real challenge, as you've probably heard the stories about the governor sending the National Guard to some districts to assist, at least with transportation. So what we are doing, where we are now, is first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you to people in the community, to grandparents and community members who have responded to my endless requests for, for helping us. Our food service department is fully staffed at the moment. That's fantastic. Thank you. And that really, there are grandparents in that department that are doing short shifts for us, and we really appreciate it. With transportation, I again want to say how appreciative I am of our partner, Five Star. They go above and beyond to try to help us problem solve. They also are struggling, you know, to find drivers. So we are, we're making it through day by day. I want folks to know the contingency planning is both in transportation and in food service. We're going, we have already started thinking through, all right, well, if we get to this point, so for example, we simply do not have enough drivers to do every single run. How do we notify parents? What's the fall blackback plan? The laws in Massachusetts require us to transport students in grades K through five who live more than two miles away. And so at, what does it look like if we're only transporting the legal minimum? How would we communicate to parents? I am not suggesting to families that the school committee is thinking, yep, that's what we're going to do. I'm talking about this as a contingency plan to make sure that school remains open. There was a story in Vermont a couple of weeks ago in southwest Vermont. They had to close school because they didn't have enough buses. So know that we're working on this, and when we have those contingency plans, it kind of lay out a flow chart. At this point, this happens. At this point, this happens. This is how you get notified. And because sometimes this happens because people get sick, they're allowed to do that. It happens. That notification could be day-of notification. But our goal is to at least that families will understand and school committee will get a chance to review and make, you know, suggestions for revisions or changes, what the process is, like how each kind of, what each fall, but what, what triggers a fallback plan and what that looks like. I'm trying to say. So more to come, but we are working on it. I don't want the community to think, gosh, given the fact that this is really a problem, are they just sitting back and crossing their fingers and throwing pennies and wishing wells? Now, we're, we are planning, so I do want families to know that.
Thank you for having a fallback position, and also good news that your outreach efforts have resulted in some help. I, I know that your superintendent newsletters are, are very much a hot item, and people, you know, really pay attention to those, those, when they come out. One thing, I don't know that you've made any announcements by way of our school committee video, which is televised. And I'm wondering whether, is there still a need? And would it make sense for you to recap what that need might be now?
Transportation. So thank you, Humira. So transportation. And if you are remotely interested, even if you don't have, if you are just driving a Toyota Prius and you think, I'm not really sure if I can even drive a bus, call us, email me, we'll find out what you can do. And also, we've said, any interest is not too boutique or odd. So someone might say, I wouldn't mind helping out to be, to do athletic trips if I had the right licenses. I wouldn't mind helping out transporting students in a special education van. Or, so anything, please, email me. And I will put you in touch with the right people about learning what you might need to do, what kinds of license you might need to possess and training that's required. And we would work with you to try to make sure that we can train you without, without expenses to the person getting trained. So please, transportation, we need, even if you just want to sub, we need help with transportation.
Great, well, thank you for that. And, you know, true story, I've always wanted to learn how to drive a bus ever since I was at Smith, and I would take five college classes. I always admired the way those PVTA bus drivers handled that bus. So maybe one day, Annie, if we get that fit enough, I'll pitch in, because it's, it would, it would fulfill a lifelong dream of mine, in addition to many other things that I do. Thank you for that. Okay, so we're at the, the Business Manager Reports. Chris, are you hanging in there? Are you ready to, I think I need to make you a co-host. Hang on one second.
Yes.
Oh, terrific.
He is.
Can you, let me text, maybe he can't hear it? Or maybe he texted me that something is wrong?
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Okay, and I apologize. My daughter had just asked me a question about what was for dinner, and I was answering her, and I missed what she said, so I'm very sorry for that.
No worries at all. Yep, no, you're on for the Business Manager Reports.
Okay.
revolving grants, all the things.
All right, so we can start with the regular expense report that we get every month. If you scroll through this report, there are a lot of accounts which look, maybe not alarmingly, but quite a bit over budget at this point in time. That is really just because the grants are still in somewhat of a state of flux. And by that, what I mean And by that, what I mean is, they haven't all been approved officially yet. So until we get them with the official approval, I can't transfer expense over to them. So what we end up with is, um, say sped tuitions on the two forty grant we normally charge, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, those are all sitting with their encumbrances right now in the regular budget. There's been a number of IT expenses that we budgeted to be used in the S R two or S R three grants for COVID expenses. Again, right now, we did get approval for S R two, so I can do those transfers, but still not for S R three. Every district in the state has those. We did reach out last week and ask, uh, you know, just if we could have some kind of a timeline for approval. And we got a response back that they are just drowning in grant applications, and they are getting to them. And I forgot how far, how far down the list we were, but they said, uh, probably another couple of weeks or so. It's not a concern on whether or not we will be approved for it. We know we will. It's just a question of, they have to review the application and make sure we're good on it. So, um, once those get done, that's quite honestly why you don't have the grant expense report yet, because I don't really have any expenses to show on it. You know, we, we haven't gotten the official approvals. And what happens is if you do the transfers before they officially approve it, auditors don't tend to like that. Um, and so they'll say something like, oh, you were approved for your two forty grant on October first, and I see you have expenses from September in there. And, and, you know, they don't like that at all. So we do really have to wait until they're approved. But that being said, uh, you know, there are also many accounts in there that we have a lot of money sitting in. So, um, you know, a- any kind of overage that we may see are obviously going to be offset by other, either by grants or other accounts that have surpluses in them. Another account that I didn't mention, uh, we had some facilities expenses in the summer, just again, going through the heating units in the classrooms and making sure that everything was up to snuff, everything was functioning correctly. Those will be transferred as well to the S R grants once we get the final approval for S R three. So, um, again, looking good financially. I mean, we're in great shape a- as far as both the budget and the, uh, revolving accounts go. So any questions at all on the budget report?
No questions for me? I don't see any for my colleagues. Okay.
Then I have just the revolving account report. Did you guys get that? I sent it in on Friday, but I don't know if it was after.
Just got it.
Today. Great, okay. So again, if we, if we just look at that report, really looking very good. The athletic account, we haven't seen any, um, deposits to that account in quite some time, but we did get some over the summer and especially in September for, uh, tournament events that we had at Hopkins, uh, last year. So that big jump in September is the reason for that. We got, I don't know, about three thousand dollars or so for tournaments that were held here. So that was certainly nice to see. Lunch account, a- as you can see, that's, that's taken about a thirty thousand dollar hit from, uh, June thirtieth to now. Again, as we've seen several times with the lunch account, we're missing an entire month's worth of revenues in that. So I would expect it would bring it up to probably around one, one thirty-five or something once those are posted. Preschool account, we started eighty-one, we're still at seventy-nine. So really, uh, you know, after a couple of months, we're looking pretty good in that account. That's nice to see. And student activity, very little change. The same with Hadley Kids. We've had a number of expenses with Hadley Kids, but as you can see, the deposits that were put in that account pretty much kept us right about at the same point that we started at. So again, really nice to see. And the school choice, that balance is looking very large right now. Again, we have, uh, I forgot the exact amount, I can look it up, but it was over seven hundred thousand dollars in anticipated expenses for the budget, uh, for this particular school year. So, you know, that'd bring us down to a million dollars, and then we will see, um, basically about anywhere from fifty to seventy thousand dollars per month going through the rest of the school year. So it's gonna bring the balance back up again. That's a funding source, you know, quite honestly, that if we had a particular project or something that we would love to get accomplished, and we just didn't think we had the funds for it, that's something that we actually do have funds sitting there for. So certainly a good situation to be in. That's, uh, it's unusual to have a balance that high, but it, it's also good to have it just in case.
And we did, you reminded me, Chris, that as part of the strategic planning, the school committee did talk at length about the school choice balance, and as part of that conversation, that those funds, when we are looking at things such as improvements to HVAC systems and other things that S R money and, um, school choice can be places that we would be sources of funding to support those kinds of improvements.
Yep.
Great. Any questions for Chris? All right, Chris.
Okay, I apologize for missing the question too. I, I just got the request from the kitchen about what kind of noodles are we having tonight, so I had to.
That was our question too.
What's for dinner?
Had to be sure to answer that, that's all.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, we're on to, uh, school committee reports and discussion. CES, Heather.
Okay, so I had the opportunity to finally attend my first, uh, CES meeting. It was really nice to see everyone. It was very well attended for, um, all the representatives across, uh, Hampshire and Franklin and different counties. So, and all of the different districts that are members. So there, it began with a new member orientation, which I attended, and then the regular meeting. So I had a chance, an opportunity to meet with a smaller group right up front. And Humira, you were definitely missed, you know, so it was nice to be able to just continue on with our representation there. We heard from the new executive director, Todd Gazda. And he provided a report to the board, which I shared with you all, uh, after that. But I just wanted to mention, they had four strategic goals that he outlined in there and provided, really deep information about, um, how they were, you know, attempting to accomplish those goals, the initiatives that they have, how they map to those goals. So those four strategic goals, um, goal number one is meeting member district needs. Goal two is fostering the success of children, youth, and families with a focus on those placed at risk. Goal three is developing exemplary educators. And goal four is innovative practices. So when we look at the programs that the collaborative has, the initiatives that they are undertaking, they really do map back strongly to these four goals. One thing I'll just mention in closing, uh, coming up in December, it just came out, um, this week, is that they are scheduling a discussion of the collaborative's strategic goals for the next five-year strat plan. So they're, they're planning their long-term, five-year strategic plan. There's two meetings that I'll participate in. In the first meeting, they will review the new and updated, uh, SWOT analyses. So that's the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, um, developed by departments. And they'll consider the implications of what they got from that. And then in the second meeting, they'll work in groups to develop goals and objectives that guide, uh, the collaborative in the coming years using a consensus-based approach for goal-setting, which will benefit greatly from participation across the departments as well as the different roles within the collaborative. So that's happening the ninth and the tenth of December. So I'll look forward to bringing you all an update after that takes place. And I know, Annie, you were also mentioned as just a, you know, um, a really valuable thought partner, uh, with the collaborative. So I also appreciate your presence and, and leadership with that, uh, group.
Heather, thank you so much for, um, participating, uh, first of all, and a one thorough and wonderful, um, update, and also for participating in that strategic plan. The organization has, um, uh, just such a positive impact on the member districts and is so responsive to our needs. And for you to be in at the ground floor, at the heels of our two-day strategic, uh, planning session can really feed in nicely to what, um, what we see as important for Hadley's districts, Hadley's district, but also surrounding districts. So it's really such a great opportunity to help set the stage for the next five years. Thank you for, um, contributing to that.
You're welcome. I'm looking forward to it. So thanks.
Does anyone have any questions for Heather? Okay, terrific. Thank you. And on to finance, Ethan.
I've, I've got no updates for finance this, this month.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ethan. And policy, Tara.
Um, so we met tonight, um, for policy, and attached on the agenda is, uh, link for the first reading for the flag policy. Um, it was a legal opinion, um, put forward by Dupre Office, who this district uses, um, as their legal advisors, that we, um, implement a flag policy. So that is after that reading, um, today, after we reviewed it today. We felt it was appropriate to bring it forward for our first reading, um, tonight to share with you all. Um, and I know you haven't had a chance probably before this to read it, because we just did put that in, and it was one of the adjustments, um, in the agenda. And I don't know if you can see it, or if I should read it for everybody to hear.
Tara, that might be nice. It's super short, so.
Yeah, it's very short. Um, so had the flag and banner policy. Uh, it shall be the policy of the Hadley School Committee to only permit the flying of the American flag or banners and the Massachusetts State Flag or banners on school grounds and/or in school buildings. Any group or organization wishing to affix a flag or banner on school grounds and/or school buildings must submit a written request to the school committee, along with a picture or drawing of the proposed flag or banner, showing all measurements and colors. Requests will be reviewed and approved or denied on a case-by-case basis, and no decision by the school committee will be considered, um, precedent-setting for future requests, including the same group or organization. So that's, that's it. Again, this came from the, um, attorney's office, and they did propose a recommendation that we do have something in place should this, um, come up in the future.
So I have a question. Um, it's not regarding the policy, but more about if the policy goes through and is enacted, are there criteria or sample, you know, what's our guide in reviewing those case-by-case requests? Like, is there guidance that there, that go along with that policy to help us out?
Heather, that's a really good question, and we, um, we, we had a good deal of sort of, uh, discussion about what that would look like. And honestly, we would look at our, um, our various, uh, school committee policies on, um, uh, policies like the racism resolution or policies like the, um, our, uh, school committee norms. And so, uh, does a certain, uh, flag or image, uh, represent the ideals that we wish to uphold of kindness and respect and inclusiveness? Um, and we would need to take it by, uh, a case-by-case basis in order to, um, to make that determination.
No, that's helpful. It sounds like, um, what may be next then for us is to actually outline those steps and those sources that we would be going to, and kind of the questions that we would be asking about the nature of the request and it, it's alignment or non-alignment to our, our various source documents, like you mentioned.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Annie, does that make sense from the standpoint of a light procedures document? That may, um, just provide, uh, the scaffold needed to bring such requests to us?
Yes.
Or maybe like a checkbox, like a question, does this meet X criteria based on X? You know, you can check the boxes to make sure that we're not being discriminatory, offensive, and in line with the district's plans. It could be pretty simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, simple's fine. It, it's more about, um, that we have a standardized process for evaluating the requests, not that it doesn't vary. We don't want it to vary depending on the request.
Yeah, really good point. Thank you. Any other comments on this? All right, so we shall consider this for first reading, and we'll bring it back in the November meeting for second reading. Terrific. Um, and there, I think there's one other item.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that, because it isn't at this point a policy first reading. This is just, uh, the policy subcommittee. I informed them of the fact that I had sought a legal opinion regarding students, uh, requesting changes in pronouns, the pronouns that they're referred to in school. And, um, what does the law say about, uh, students' requests for using a particular pronoun and, uh, parent notification? And the law is very clear when there's a request to change something on a student record. And the law is not, uh, nearly as clear in terms of regulations regarding, um, parent notification and student-initiated request to use a different pronoun that is not, that does not constitute an official request. I want to underscore, this is when a student makes this request and however, does not make it as an official request, i.e., please change my educational record to reflect this request. And so there are, uh, recommendations always, and it is a priority of this district to always engage with parents as partners and with families. And, um, it is always recommended that the, the safety and well-being of the student is also taken into consideration. And so the legal opinion we received, uh, spoke to that. And next, we will go back to the, uh, attorney and ask for recommendations regarding, a more, a, a policy as opposed to just legal opinions aren't the same as policies, so recommendations for a draft policy. The policy subcommittee will review that in the meeting. Any draft policy is always brought before the school committee for a first reading, for a second reading, and it'd be an invitation to public comment, as there is at every school committee meeting. Right now, we just have reviewed a legal opinion, not Hadley Public Schools' opinion, not the school committee's opinion, but a legal opinion. And now we'll be requesting, uh, the school committee attorney, or the attorney for Hadley Public Schools, to draft a policy that you can review and discuss.
Great, thank you, Annie. Um, I for one am, uh, appreciative of making it clear what we would do in such an instance, so there isn't any ambiguity, and we're not making it up as we go along. So thank you for investigating this. Okay, um, any, any questions on that for Annie? Okay, terrific. Um, moving on, Fields and Capital, Paul is not here. Annie, is there anything?
Sure, uh, yes. So we are, um, we do have some funds remaining from phase one. Next would be phase two. Chris is doing a fantastic job of, um, communicating with Berkshire Design, who helped us with phase one, and communicating with the Inspector General's Office. So what we're looking to do next would be to make sure that we follow, uh, proper procurement to get, um, designs for phase two and bid specifications, so that we can go out to bid on the work. And then Paul and I would, uh, be presenting to CPA an update on phase one. We'd like to then have bid specifications and, uh, designs in hand for phase two. And to get a sense of if, um, the CPA might entertain providing some financial support for phase two of the project. So that's where we are right now, and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. And I think Chris might have something to, uh, mention in this regard, possibly?
I do, yes. Um, so I had contacted the Inspector General's Office just to get an opinion from them on how we should handle the procurement of the design work. Um, I received a call back this afternoon telling me I needed to speak to a certain person who handled building and design, and they were at the Attorney General's Office. So I called that person, where the voicemail said she was working remotely, and I needed to send an email to this email address. I sent the email to that email address, and I got an auto-response saying that she was working remotely and had no access to email or phone. So this is how these things go sometimes. So I will continue to chase this down. But, um, if, if there's a delay, this is why. But I, I did want to mention, yeah, we do have funds available, about thirty-five thousand dollars from the phase one of the project, so that will pay for, you know, a good portion of the design work, um, for phase two. And what we really have to do at this point, um, is we need to first find out what method of procurement we can use. Can we use one that just goes by price? Can we use one that takes the qualifications of the vendors into account? And we choose with that method. Fenders into account and we choose with that method and not with pricing? And that's, you know, you don't really want to mess with this. You want to make sure you get it right. So that's, that's what we're in the process of doing right now. But either way, I would anticipate, I'm not really sure what to do. I was, I actually didn't do anything when I got that email, hoping that it might have just been an auto reply. And I would get a response. So I'm going to give it a day or two before. I don't even know what to do at this point in time, but I'm going to try to find who else to call and. And get an answer. So we can just move forward. It'd be nice to try to nail this down in the next couple of weeks as to what we need to do.
Thank you, Chris, for for following up on that. You know, I find that that is not unusual in light of this great reopening back from the pandemic. There's so many different parts of our society right now. That are in that same kind of loop and just like. Having a little, having a hard time just getting back up and running to the same degree. So thank you for just bird dogging that and. And making judicious use of any unspent funds to make that happen.
Okay.
All right. We're on to negotiations, Pfeiffer and Percy. So Ethan and Paul. Paul's not here. Ethan.
Yeah, I'll just quickly talk a little bit about the negotiations with HEA around vaccine mandates. I think first. The first thing is just to acknowledge, as Annie mentioned earlier, the incredibly high, excuse me, incredibly high vaccine rates among. The educators at both Hopkins Academy and Hadley Elementary. I think that's, that's just awesome to be, to be honest. The second thing is just given the fact that OSHA's announcement seems relatively imminent, we decided to kind of hold off on making any decisions or having any more conversations until we heard. Kind of what had been given to us in terms of guidance around vaccine mandate from OSHA. So that's kind of where we're at now. And Annie, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
No, I think that's, that's perfectly.
Great. Any questions for Ethan? Okay, terrific. Thank you, Ethan and Paul for continuing to shepherd that conversation. And finally, we need to appoint school committee representatives for unit A negotiations and for unit D.
This is for the contract that they had a one-year extension to June 30. So all contracts aspire, those two contracts aspire on June 30. And we want to get one for July 1, 2022 through June 30, three years away. For about unit A.
Okay, great. So I know Paul's not here. But I wonder. Annie, do you need this tonight?
Um, no, that's okay. We can. I seriously doubt that the HEA is looking to start scheduling. Negotiations meetings before Thanksgiving because we're coming up to the Thanksgiving holiday, but probably at our next meeting we should so we can. Start getting the ball rolling, especially because budget development, other things will happen in short order. So we can move it to November.
Okay, great. So I would, I'd love to just. Float out there that any volunteerism to be on either one of these contracts would be. Greatly appreciated. I for one am traveling about every other week. These days, so I would. I will pitch in as needed, but if there's a willingness. So anyway, I'll just, any excitement there might be to be on the negotiating committee would be warmly received.
Annie, can you remind us, unit A and unit D?
Yes, so teachers and educational, sorry, yeah, teachers and educational support professionals. I should have been clear about that. And folks here who have done negotiations in the past, which I think is the vast majority. It is in this district, I would say, I mean, knock wood in this district, it is a. Truly like a wonderful and painless process. And that's because. I think there's good working relationships and people are very interested in logical conversations. We collect a lot of data in advance right now. We're in the process of gathering all the data, the comparable wage data for the region. So we have a lot of data that drives the discussion and moves it along efficiently, I should say. We don't rush through things unnecessarily, but it's a very efficient conversation.
And with Zoom, there never was an easier time to schedule and meet. So. We are, we are in good, good stead for. Solid and easy negotiations, I hope.
Yes, and it's typically a subcommittee is two school committee members. We need a subcommittee for each one, unit A and unit D. There's nothing that says that a person couldn't say. Yeah, I'm willing, I'll be on both of those. That's fine too, but they are two separate sets of negotiations.
Great.
I will throw my hat in the ring for unit A. Preliminary. I know we need to, but I am interested in doing that.
Thank you. That would be wonderful.
I've appreciated doing that in the past. I really do like working with them and hearing from them. And I think it is very helpful to hear. What they're kind of, you know, what's top of mind for them in thinking about these negotiations looking ahead.
I was going to offer unit A to myself as well, only because I think I've done unit B, unit D before. I don't think I've done unit A, but I'm happy to step aside if somebody's really excited to do that. That's okay by me, but I'm happy to do A or if somebody again is pressing, I'll do D. That's fine.
Thank you, Tara. Ethan, do you have a sense for where you'd like to be?
No, I'm happy to do whatever. I think I did unit D last year. Happy to do it again. I'm down for whatever.
Okay. So I would say if we could, I mean, maybe we should just finalize next month and just think on it some more and I. I see no reason why we couldn't give everyone what they wished to do. So thank you for expressing your interests and let's hear from Paul as well and. Finalize at the next meeting.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Great. All right. So. We're on to item seven announcements. So I wonder if any of you all have announcements for today's meeting? Okay, I will just put out that there, that I have a quick announcement and that is that we are on the third. Of a three-part series called Indigenous Matters that Hadley Learns has been spearheading along with the library and the committee on diversity, equity and inclusion. Schools and the senior center. And this third event is. A book reading. There are two books. One is called I Will. I Will: How Four American Indians Put Their Lives on the Line and Changed History. And the other is Braided Sweetgrass: Indigenous Wisdom, Scientific Knowledge and the Teachings of Plants. And that's a really good one around ecology and balance and climate change. And it just has like. Five-star ratings and 30,000 people who have read it. And so even if you take in a video summary and are able to join us, we welcome that. That is this. Next, so Thursday, November 4. Let's see, that would be.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. That's right. Next Thursday, 7 o'clock to 8:30. You can RSVP at hadleylearns.com. Okay, that is it for. My announcements and we are on to. The final item of the agenda. I believe, Annie, we are. Going into executive session?
No, sorry. I think you can go, I, I'm sorry, I should have done that as an adjustment. I always do. You can see where it says move to go in to discuss.
Yeah.
Nothing further after that. So that I should have said, we don't need to do that. We just have your action items, remaining action items and confirming our next meeting date.
Okay, terrific. So an approval of minutes of September 20, 2021. I wonder if there's a motion on the table?
Moved.
And a second? I think Tara mouthed second.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Approval of policy subcommittee minutes.
And let me clarify for people, just so they know, anybody can vote on this. Jenny Tatum said that you don't have to have been there, like. You can vote to approve policy subcommittee minutes. An absent person can. I just wanted to make that clear to people.
Great. And this is for May 24, June 28, July 26 and August 30. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved. Second.
All right, terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next, approval of AP warrants for September 2021. And this is the one that Heather, you abstained from. Terrific. So do I hear a motion to approve the AP warrants for September?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Terrific, motion passes. Approval of warrants for September 2021. And I believe this is the one that Paul abstains from, so we can all vote here. Motion to approve.
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Third.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent.
Out of here. This is.
Promise it'll get smoother. It'll get smoother. The substitute nursing per diem, I think we already motioned and approved that. And then we also approved Harts Brook. So we are good to go there. Next meeting dates. Are November 22 for policy subcommittee at 5 and a regular school committee at 5:30. I'm just going to, and that is the Monday before Thanksgiving. That I'm, I won't be traveling that week. That tends to, that seems to work fine on my end. Is it all, is it okay for you all? Good?
Yes.
All right, terrific. All right, we are good there. And I think that is it. Wow, eight minutes shy of our seven o'clock goal. I think we can call this meeting to an end. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for a wonderful and efficient.
Night, guys. Good night.